Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's 3:00. We are missing one council member today. Mayor Pro Tem Jeff Jones is in Japan this afternoon. But we have a full quorum without him, so we'll proceed to take care of business. The way we always handle a council meeting is the first thing we do is open with a prayer. Pastor Scott Vermillion from the Church of Horseshoe Bay is here to lead us in prayer, and then we'll do the pledges to the United States and the great state of Texas.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Well, Jesus, we are grateful for this afternoon. We are grateful for this community and all that it brings to us, the opportunities, as well as the camaraderie and the friendships we make here. And we thank you for leadership. We thank you for the city council that have chosen to use their time to help better our community, to make decisions that are for us, and to extend our lives and to keep us safe. We thank you for the conversations that will be had today, and we pray that would further your purposes in this place and this time. We're so grateful to you and so grateful, this opportunity to be a community in this place. In your name we pray. Amen. (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one in your city.
Thank you so much, Pastor Vermillion. We appreciate you being here. Carrie has gone out to get the sign-up sheet right, I believe. So before we proceed, I just want to do a little explanation. We have five public hearings on the agenda today, and if you want to speak at one of those public hearings, you can sign up on this list that she's handing me, but it's not required. Anybody can speak at a public hearing, so we will go by this list, and then if there's someone who wants to speak and you didn't put your name on here, that's okay. We'll get to you. So before we get to the public hearings, though, we've got some announcements and some staff recognition. So Jeff?
Yes, Mayor, and council is honored to be here. I'd like to introduce some of our new employees that we have. There's three of them. Where's Mr. Kennard? There he is, Mr. Kennard. He has just joined us in the Development Services Administrative Assistant. Thank you for being here. He comes to us from a law firm right in Green Hill out of Austin. He has been graduated from UT with a Bachelor's of English in the spring of 2018. He's been working for this law firm ever since, and he's been officer, office, let's see, office service manager for that group. And he moved to Lano recently and accepted an invitation for us to come to work here. And we have a lot of good skills in organizational and understanding of legal science and technology, so he's really good at it. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second one is a returning employee, Bailey Schuster, who is the water plant operations maintenance operator. He did work here before. In 2020, he started as a field operator. He worked in that department and then left our employment in April of '23 to start his own business in clearing and excavation. And then at that time, he's been gone. He also worked for the City of Leander, the wastewater plant operator, and finally figured out this is the place he needed to be. Glad he's back. He's a good man. And so Bailey and his wife live here in the area and have been married for five years and have a three-year-old son, Wyatt. And we're glad to have you back, Bailey. Thank you so much. And then where's Jeffrey John Johnson?
Johnson.
Johnson, is he not here?
He's in over there.
Okay, okay. So I'll just go ahead and introduce him, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. So Officer Jeffrey Johnson came, he was originally from Tyler, Texas. He served as a state correctional officer for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice for 15 years, holding a rank of sergeant and lieutenant. He served the citizens of Lano as a deputy sheriff for Lano for the last nine years. And just recently, he joined the Horseshoe Bay Police Department in July and holds advanced peace officer license. Him and his wife Wendy have two grown children and live in Burnett, and we welcome his service, too. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Now we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the fiscal 2025 third quarter financial report. And Molly Jester, where are you? There you are.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Oh, you know what? I apologize. I'm sorry. Let me go back, Molly. Sorry. We do need to do public comments, and we do have a few people who have signed up who are not associated with an agenda item, so we'll take those public comments now. The first one is Craig Hayden, and he's going to talk to us about the Hill Country 100 Club. So Craig, what have you got?
How'd you know that?
Because you wrote it on here, and I believe it or not, you must be a doctor. I know you're not a doctor, but you sure write like one.
Well, you're right. The floods turned everything upside down for us, and with that, in that regard, you know, we lost a firefighter. And we took a check for $25,000 to his widow as soon as it was pronounced. And so she was very grateful, and we are, too, to be able to do that. So our fundraiser ordinarily, the golf tournament, we couldn't, we wanted to go back to our 9/11, and that's where we're going to do that from now on. And the Horseshoe Bay golf courses were already tied up for that deal. So we made a deal with the Legends Golf Course over in Kingsland. We're going to have bagpiper services, et cetera, and we'll do everything, the salutes, et cetera, everything, and do a shotgun start at 9:00, and hopefully that will avoid us, some of our players having to play in heat that nobody wants to play in. But that's what we're going to do now. Our messages are the same, and we know that the city has always been a responsible person for us. We've even managed to have Jeff Koska out there, believe it or not.
So it's on September the 11th?
Yes.
Oh.
And so that really is about it. We've got all the, everything is in order, so if you're interested in it or you don't, just call one of the people that we have in the paper as well, you know, various perp book. So, or you can call people like me, and that really is about it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I regret, I know that the Nine Hole Ladies are holding a golf tournament on September 11th, and that's the ladies' summit member guests that day. So there's a lot of competition for the ladies. Hopefully, the men will show up and support this because the work of the Hill Country 100 Club is vital to this community, and I can't imagine how meaningful it was to that wife when you presented her with that check. Money never, doesn't fix anything, but at least somebody knows that we loved them, so thank you for the work you do. Thank you. Jay Platt is here to talk about Richter Ranch.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jay Platt, Horseshoe Bay resident, representing the Hill Country Trekkers Hiking Group. The Richter's Ranch proposal, proposed development is an active proposal, and we feel that's important to express our concerns here today, even though it's not on the agenda. The proposed development has homes too close to Horseshoe Bay Creek and the Horseshoe Bay Creek Hiking Trail. There needs to be a large, wide tree-lined buffer between the development and Horseshoe Creek and the trail in order to protect this sensitive ecosystem. And, you know, as we all know, this is a treasure of Horseshoe Bay, and the proximity of that development could compromise that area. Thank you for your concern, consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate those remarks. We have two speakers here to speak about items that are on the consent agenda. Normally, I would wait until we get to the consent agenda, but I don't think, I think what I'm going to do is go ahead and ask them to speak, so in case they don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, they can leave. The first one is Cynthia Kleinsmith, who wants to talk to us about an item on the consent agenda related to the Horseshoe Bay Park. So go ahead, Cynthia.
Good afternoon. Really, I just come to bring my appreciation to the council. This item on the consent agenda is to approve your generous partnership with the collaboration for the park out in Horseshoe Bay South. If you'll remember when Horseshoe Bay was built 50-odd years ago, the trailer park up there had working families that helped build this area, helped build the resort, and it remains our one area where we still have a lot of children, but they have no outdoor experiences. So I'm proud of the city for honoring its promise that it's set all along, that when it comes time, we'll help with the infrastructure, getting the water lines there, so that was accomplished immediately. I have to sidebar and just say, we forget how hard our utility workers work, everyone who works outside for our city. I mean, watching them with pickaxes in 100-degree weather, enormous amount of work. But the collaboration itself, the city is joining the county, the resort, the LCRA, local business members, the POA, and by end of October, there will be a full park in this empty field up there that will have restroom facilities, basketball court, playscape, a pond that you can kayak and fish on. It's going to be a beautiful collaboration to represent community, so I appreciate the city being a part of that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Cynthia, and obviously, this is a picture of what it's supposed to look like, and I just want to thank you because, you know, you've certainly done your share of being of community leadership in these positions, in this position, and now on the POA board. You've really stepped forward, and when there's a job that needs to be done, Cynthia goes and does it. So thank you so much for that. And Jim Jordan is here to speak about the mausoleum, which is another item on the consent agenda. Jim, do you want to speak?
Actually, just a contingency that my name's there in case that comes off the consent agenda and I have questions on the fourth one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're ready for presentations, and now we'll call on Molly Jester to present the third quarter financial report.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're going to go over the third quarter financial statements, the general fund revenue. So right now, we are at October 1st, the beginning of our fiscal year to June 30th, which represents nine months, which is about 75% or 3/4 of the year. So one would expect, here's our total revenues, here's our budget. So we're at 88% of our revenues, so that is great. That is mainly due to this line right here, our taxes, which includes our property taxes. Those are at, collected about 98%, and our sales tax is about 82%. So development services is a little bit low. It should pick up, which it did in July, and it had a lot of permits. So if not, we'll do budget amendment. Let's see. Our lot mowing's doing very well. Renee has been collecting on some past liens, so you can see that over, and our interest is doing fine. So again, we're at 88%. Are there any questions on the general fund revenue? Not, we'll go to our expenditures. Again, nine months. We're down here with our actual and our budget, and we're at 53%, so we're good. We're holding. You go down to street maintenance, it's a little bit low, but what Tim does is he waits till the summer just to see where he stands, and then he spends, and a lot of times, he needs the heat to do some of his projects, like the paving. The transfer expenditures, you'll see they're very low. That relates to the general fund paying for some items on the city center that are outside of the contract. Those are timing issues, and so as it's needed, the general fund will fund some money to the capital fund, and if it's not spent, it'll be carried forward to the following year. Are there any questions on the general fund expenditures? Okay. Next, we'll go to the general fund capital expenditures. You go down to the total, we're at 63% of our budget. You can see these are done. The police, it's just a timing issue on their radios. They came in July. And this right here on the transportation plan, we have a budget amendment to get that back in line. And are there any questions on the capital fund general, capital expenditures? Okay? If not, we'll go to the utility fund revenue analysis. You go down to the bottom, we're at 67%. But with water, as everyone knows, we're in a drought. We went from stage two to stage one. July 15th, we came off due to the flooding that happened, which was unfortunate, but it did help with the stage being dropped, and we do believe that honestly, that is picking up because everyone's watering now because there is a drought, so that should pick up. Our wastewater, the grinders are down, grinder cells are down, but that's going to pick up. And again, the transfer income is a little down. It's just timing. As capital projects on the utility fund are spent, the capital fund has a bond that pays for that and transfers over the money, and what isn't spent will just be carried forward. Any questions? Okay, we'll go to the utility fund expenditures. Go down to the bottom, actual compared to budget, we're at 68%. So on the water production, it looks very high. If you recall back in October, we had a chemical gas accident, and so those expenditures are in there, and we're actually getting reimbursed from our insurance company, so there'll be some budget amendments. For the debt service, it's a little bit low. Again, that's timing. We pay in July and August, and this is as of June, so that explains those explanations. Are there any questions on the utility fund expenditures? Okay. We'll go to the utility fund capital expenditures. Again, you go all the way down to the bottom, we're at 43%. It's up here at, you know, pretty well, you know, near 100. It's probably complete. If it's at zero, there's a chance that'll be carried forward to next year because we really only have about a month left of this fiscal year. Down here in our water plant, if anything says bonds, which a lot of them do, that means they're funded by bonds. And again, those are timing. As money is spent on those, the bond will reimburse, so what isn't spent will be carried forward to the following fiscal year. Any questions? Okay, we'll go to the capital fund revenue. We got our latest bond on June 11th, so you can see that being funded. You can also see there's some timing differences, again, on transfers from the general fund and from the utility fund. Again, those are being transferred over as they're spent, and what isn't spent will carry forward. Are there any questions? Okay. The last page is the capital fund expenditure analysis. So this is where you'll see our city center coming in. You'll see our fire station. You'll see our streets. Again, they look low, but Tim, we'll spend it this summer, and what isn't spent, really on anything, will carry forward to the following year. Are there any questions?
No questions? Yes, ma'am.
That's it for my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Molly. I mean, this is a little bit mustard after the meal, because the council just spent four and a half hours this morning talking about next year's budget, so to hear about what happened the first three quarters of the year, we're sort of like, eh, that's yesterday's news. We're moving on. But Molly and her team do a great, great job of keeping up with our finances and keeping us on track, and we really appreciate everything that you do. She's required to give this quarterly report, or we wouldn't probably have done it today. But anyway, thank you very much, Molly. Appreciate it. So now we move on to public hearings. I'm going to open the first public hearing, but before I do so, let me just sort of tell you all how this is going to work. Nobody, everybody is inside, so there's no one outside, right, Jason? Okay, good. So with the public hearing, what we'll do is, the first thing we'll do is, we'll ask our staff to give their staff report, go through whatever, in this case, Rick Williams, who's our assistant city manager, he will go through whatever. He wants to present. He will make a staff recommendation to the council. Then we will ask the developer, in this case, the applicant, which is developer, to make their presentation. I believe they have some slides to present. Let me ask at this point, how many of you were at the public forum last Tuesday, or was it Monday or Tuesday? So, okay, so a good portion of you were there. Good. And then after that, after the developer makes their presentation, we will let the public make your remarks. I'm going to limit the remarks to three minutes a person. Carrie Craig over here has a little machine that she'll set for three minutes, and it starts doing something when you have 30 seconds, right?
It beeps in the yellow one.
Okay, so when the yellow starts flashing, you know you need to start summing up your remarks, and out of deference to other people who want to speak and just for the time of everyone here involved, I will hold you to that three minutes. Then after that, we will allow the council to ask their questions. And council, if you want to interrupt someone, if you have a question that you just can't wait to ask, if you would just raise your hand and allow me to call on you rather than just interrupting, I'd appreciate that. And then after that, we'll close the public hearing, and then the council will take a vote. So that's the way it'll work. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 3:22 to talk about ordinance 2025-31, approving conditional use authorization, 2025-04, request for a temporary approval of rock crushing and screening operations at the Atten Hill location in Summit Rock. Okay, Rick Williams?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council residents, thank you all for attending today. So what we have today is, we have a conditional use permit application for Atten Hill in regards to a rock crusher for onsite processing of construction material. For the sake of time, I won't read the staff report verbatim for you, but essentially, in section 14.02.402 of our city zoning ordinance, there is some language that authorizes council to consider a conditional use under certain conditions, one of them being temporary use, not permitted in the zoning district, or to grant relief from development standards that can be, I'm sorry, but not to be used to grant release from development services that can be approved by a zoning variance from Board of Adjustments. Our legal counsel said that this was an appropriate forum, CUP, for the council, and so we went that route and set a Board of Adjustments. Staff, mostly myself, have been in contact with the developer, worked with the last several months to try to come up with criteria for y'all to consider. Our main focus was on noise, air quality, dust control, traffic, and then duration of construction, which, you know, like it or not, construction can be an interruption in daily life, and so we felt those four points were the focus of what I was working on, to try to set criteria, set limits, and then bring something forth for y'all to consider, whether you approve it or not. In the code of ordinance, also in section 14 of zoning, it authorizes council to impose additional conditions on their approval of a conditional use. If they're inclined to approve use of this property as requested, staff has included enumerated conditions as an attached exhibit in the draft ordinance. These conditions are largely based on the applicant's description of their proposed operations, which I have observed and quantified. I'll go through them. After going through all of that, essentially, what we came up with, and it's on page, I'm going to skip forward a little bit, so if you go in the packet to page 15, you'll see a map that shows the five proposed sites, and so...
Read that.
Yes, ma'am? It's, yeah, it's on their slides, too. Yeah, we'll go. I'm going to use y'all's presentation for a second here. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So this is kind of the map. These are the five locations, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. I'm going to talk really slow, that way she, I don't want her to miss this. I'm going to kind of go, I'm going to go through this, which makes sense to me, but maybe backwards, so y'all stop me if you have certain questions. I'll go to the conditions first, and they kind of tell the story, in my opinion. So staff is suggesting, if council were to approve this, that y'all would include these conditions, and I'll explain why. But condition one, the temporary rock crushing and screening operations shall be limited to the locations designated in the attachment. It's the attachment in the council, but it is this, and so essentially, it would be these five locations. Condition two would be, the operations permitted in this approval shall not begin prior to the applicant sending notice of intent to the Development Services Director 72 hours in advance, and the approval shall be good until March 1st, 2026, or 180 days from commencement of approved activities, whichever comes first. So in essence, if y'all are to approve this, even though it's approved, they still need to give notice to Development Services so that we can make sure we're there and that we can schedule our pre-cons, et cetera. Condition three, operations requiring this approval will be permitted only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding all recognized city holidays by the City of Horseshoe Bay. So essentially, no Saturday work, even though it's permitted in the ordinance. Crushing has to stop. It's not permitted between 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., the way as residents are going outside and trying to enjoy their evening, the crusher's not there, and not on city holidays. So that's one of the reasons, if y'all consider this and do approve it today, they can't meet the 72-hour requirement because of Labor Day, so it would start after that. Condition four, operations requiring this approval, meaning crushing, shall comply with the City of Horseshoe Bay noise regulations established in Article 8.03 of the Code of Ordinances. The city shall monitor compliance of the local ordinances and TCQ permit parameters through the services of IGS Incorporated, with the cost of those services being the responsibility of the applicant and deducted from the required deposits with the Development Review Committee. Essentially, we would pose that we would use a third party who is well-versed in TCQ permit parameters and proper methodology to monitor those, and also sound. So they'll monitor sound for us. That's in our Code of Ordinances. They'll monitor dust, distance, et cetera, in conjunction with the TCQ permanent parameters. We've talked with that with the developer, and they have agreed to that. Condition five, a water truck will be located onsite during all active operations requiring this approval and shall dispense water at regular intervals to control dust and maintain minimum air quality standards of adjacent property in accordance with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations. All stockpiles of material entering and exiting the crusher operation shall apply water as necessary to effectively control dust. Effectiveness shall be determined according to TCQ permit parameters. In essence, TCQ is very strict on this. I could have tried to spell this out. I thought it was better to defer to them, but they'll have to comply and apply water as they see fit. There's some other requirements, too, but for stockpiles, for trucks entering, exiting, for all those things, they have to control dust, so we can't just create a dust cloud.
Rick, this has multiple monitoring stations.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, no, good point. So what this will be is, we'll have some monitoring at the, and this will be the third-party inspector. He'll sort of set this up for us, but there'll be some at the perimeter of the property, so we can monitor sound leaving the property and dust, and then as they move this, if y'all approve it, they'll come out and they'll do a pre-con. You said it takes about four hours. They'll meet with the construction site representative. They'll set up the proper monitors. It'll be two or three for air quality, some sound monitors, and it'll move with it, too. Yes, sir?
It's kind of nitpicking, but you said in there, a water truck will be onsite?
Yes, sir.
I think it ought to read a manned water truck. There's a difference between a manned water truck and just a truck being out there.
Okay, received. Is that, Donnie? Okay, okay.
In your, if you can, so, if we can make sure we got that for the question.
Okay. Man water. Manned water. Good point. Okay. Condition six, all rock, I went too far. All rock crushers shall be screened for sound reduction and to limit the view from all nearby residences, public streets, and from the portions of Summit Rock Golf Course that are normally accessible to patrons of that facility. Essentially, they're gonna do some visual screening. I was onsite with the, their construction.
Consultant?
Superintendent? Construction manager. And so they carefully picked these, I went onsite and looked at them, too, to find places that have natural vegetation screening. They're sort of, based on topography, they may be down a little bit in a hole. And so as best we could, we screened it with natural. Where we can't, there'll be, there'll be some sort of screening device to, to keep the residences from having to look at it. And then also, when you're, for the people that golf, Summit Rock, so when you're on the normal portions of the golf course, you won't, you won't see this the whole time. If, which I'm told Councilmember Jose never shanks the ball. So other than him, anybody that shanks the ball over there, if you get in the rough, you might see it. If you're on the golf course, you should be okay.
Usually, the only one that's, will be at number three, the par three.
This one here?
That's the only one that has potential to be seen. The other ones, you won't.
We'll take, when we get to that one, too. I think, if I recall correctly, they're numbered in order that they'll move. Is that correct? That'd be the third location? Generally speaking, so we'll make sure when we get to that one, we'll, if it's approved, we'll take special consideration on that. Condition seven, so we're moving kind of out of noise, dust, et cetera, into, into more traffic, control stuff. Condition seven, developer, I have a typo, that should read developer, shall install signage indicating left turn only exiting the development. Signage shall be approved in writing by the City Manager's Office prior to installation for final location, verbiage, and design. Basically, if y'all are okay with it, if y'all approve it, Jeff or myself will approve where the sign's located officially and then the verbiage for it. But if y'all permit this, the trucks would enter and exit up here. There's a crossover road there now. I understand it had barricades on it at one point. My understanding is that POA has allowed them, if this is approved, they can turn left and go that way so they can access Highway 71 instead of turning right and going down 2147. It's kind of on our system a little bit, but the sign there does make it a little bit of an enforceable action for them to turn. It's important. The other side of it, too, is we'll do some education on it. Jeff and I ran the route, and it's actually two minutes quicker to go that way to get back to where their final location would be than it would be to go through 2147.
Final location is in Burnet.
Yes, sir. Yep, is Burnet over on Park Road 4. So, so we'll have them install that. That way, it keeps the truck traffic out of Horseshoe Bay proper, essentially, and down through Summit Rock. Final condition number eight that we're proposing is haul trucks accessing Pedro's roadway shall comply with all standards of Texas traffic laws regarding tarping of loads. This is already there, but we're just putting it in there. They have to tarp their loads appropriately when they're entering or exiting the site, so rocks don't come out, et cetera. So I'll back up a little bit. We came up with these, essentially, I, I think, I went onsite to where they have this exact model of crusher out in a development in Georgetown. Ranger Excavating was operating it. And so I am a pessimist by nature, and so it's, it's hard to convince me that something will be if I don't actually see it. So I wanted to see what the dust looked like, what the noise considerations, et cetera. So the closest, and I believe it's number five, the closest they get are, or it may be number two, two residences, seven hundred feet from the property line. So I went to the seven hundred foot mark. I measured it with our decibel meter. I visually looked at it. And so I, I think the noise consideration is achievable. We'll put monitors and make sure it's there. But I think it's achievable if they stay at these five spots, they can be in compliance with our noise ordinance.
Rick, would that be more visible if we turn the lights down? I feel like they, I don't believe they can read the numbers. And, and it'd be nice for you to maybe point out where, where one, you know.
Yes. Yes.
And council members, you have this map on your.
It's on page thirty-four, I believe.
Yeah, page thirty-four.
Okay, so it is.
Does that help?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead. I said, does that help?
Okay. It's located one, two, three, four, and five. So four and five are clustered pretty close together. The duration of construction, their rough estimate is about thirty days per. There are a lot of criteria that go into that, but it's essentially thirty, a little bit more days per. So about a month for each location is what they're proposing. And so I'll kind of back into this a little bit. So there's a couple of schools of thought with this. This, the crusher they're proposing to use is on tracks. It technically could drive around the entire, it's mobile. You could drive it as you go. If any of y'all have had, have been unlucky enough to drive on 35 or 183 at any point, you see they sort of drive down the center, they crush, they do that. They're, they're kind of designed to do that for roadway construction, et cetera. So there's a little bit of a balance with, we don't want this thing driving around, moving around all day, every day, and everybody to see it, because then it's hard to visually screen it. But we also, you know, my goal for it was that we want to, if council's gonna consider this, I want to get it in and out. And so it, it minimizes the amount of disturbance and inconvenience for the residents. So the middle ground I proposed was five sites that allows them to access where the material is being stockpiled and be able to effectively and efficiently use it to move, you know, time-wise, to minimize the time issue. But also not be in one spot and then having to use a haul truck or another piece of machinery that's gonna create, you know, dirt and noise, et cetera. So they could have put it in the center of it, and they could have used trucks to move this stuff onsite to the center of it. That extends the time a little bit. Or we could have let them drive around the loop, and then they, maybe it would have been a little bit quicker, but more interruption. So tried to find kind of a middle ground to propose for y'all to consider. I think dust control is likely the biggest concern from the residents and from staff as well. And so TCQ has some requirements in there, air quality permit already, for where spray bars are mounted, how they have to control dust, et cetera. We added a little bit extra with the water trucks. I observed the crusher when I was onsite. Once the conveyor belt is going and the spray bars are on, the dust does not actually come off the crusher, from what I observed. It's more the machinery moving around. Hence why we require the water trucks onsite as well. There is a little bit at startup before everything gets wet and, and moving. And so they've agreed, you know, they'll, they'll hose it, they'll start it, they'll hose the stockpiles to try to knock that down before they get started. What the third-party consultant, IGS, told me, they've done some monitoring for the city in the past, but they also specialize in quarry monitoring, TCQ permits, et cetera. Is at seven hundred feet, which is the closest they are, he does not think the dust will migrate from the site, provided they comply with the permit, which they will. So they, they can speak to time a little bit more if you want to go to their presentation, or I can walk through whatever your preference would be.
Is it safe to say?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Rick? If you're for Frank, you're supposed to get called.
It's safe to say that what people have experienced so far was rock hammers.
Yes, sir.
Not rock crushers.
Yes.
Rock crushers are controlled, and the hammers are more of an issue. Those people that live there and have watched the development of Palisades, the clubhouse.
Yes, sir.
That was all the dust created just from rock hammers, not crushers.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna.
Crusher, crusher is controlled by TCQ. So with the monitoring, that won't be the issue.
Yes, sir. Yes, and like I said, you know, for staff to try to enforce a TCQ permit is not our area of expertise, just to be quite frank. I know a lot about water and water quality. I do not know near as much about air quality. And so that's, we felt it's a must, if y'all approve this, to have that third party. How is explained to me the difference between a rock hammer and a rock crusher? Is the difference between your stove top and your oven. So if you bake something in the oven, it's controlled, it's in an enclosed environment. You may get some fumes or smell from the food, it's not as much. If you do it on top, you have open flame, if you have a cast stove, I guess, and smells and all that stuff into the environment. They achieve the same goal. One's quicker and more efficient. Based on that, one is not so much.
Rick, the rock hammers, the air hammers are subject to our noise ordinance, though, as well, aren't they?
Yeah. There's an exemption for normal construction activity, so it depends on how we would interpret it. But they've agreed that this, this will minimize how many hammers they have onsite by allowing it to crush. And that's part of their presentation, too. But it takes it from around five or six they would need to crush rock for off-site processing to get it into a dump truck, to two or three. So they need to break large boulders into a little bit less large boulders to go in the crusher versus to haul it in a dump truck. If y'all have seen it, I mean, those rocks are small. To get it in there and to safely dump it, it's more hammering onsite. The city owns and operates the utility department, two rock hammers. Every single time we use it, somebody comes out to tell us they would like us to stop. And so they're, they're a nuisance, and there's, there's no way around it. The hammers are, the hammers are probably the worst part of any type of subterranean construction, in my opinion.
Okay, well, don't go anywhere. We may need you again. Does anyone have any other questions for Rick at this time? Okay, let's ask the developer. I don't know, okay. Jeff Dyer, are you gonna be our presenter? And I, I want to just say at this point, I'd like to, before Jeff gets up, I wasn't at the meeting on June 26. I was out of town for that meeting, but there was, that was the first time this was presented. And the developer pulled their request for a conditional use permit at that time. And quite honestly, we were headed for a lawsuit. I, I feel that that's what, that's where we were gonna go. This gentleman and his team have worked really closely with us. We said, no, no. Nobody needs a lawsuit. This has got to get worked out. This is, there is a way to resolve this. This material can't stay there. We know there, there are some choices, and some of them are less desirable than others, but let's find, let's work this out. And so I just want to, for two months, they, you've noticed that nothing has gone on. They've stopped work. And so for two months, they've been working with Rick, listening to the community. They, they had a presentation that they did. It wasn't ours a week and a half or so ago. So I feel that they've really tried very hard to listen, and I know they're, they're trying to, to make this as painless as they can. So I just want to thank you for being willing to, to work with us and seeing if we can, if you can, with what you're presenting today, come, come up with a way forward that we can all live with. So I just want to thank you for that, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor Thurmond. And for those that didn't hear, my name's Jeff Dyer. I'm with Crescent Real Estate. And I just want to follow up on that and say that, I know there's one attorney in here. Are there more than one attorney in here? Okay. With all respect to my attorney's friends, when, when attorneys talk, I don't like that. When people talk, I do. And when people start talking, we find common ground. And that's exactly what I think that we've been working on the last two months. And I appreciate everyone's, you know, willingness to, to talk, because I think we can make things happen when we talk. With that said, a lot of this presentation we made last Tuesday, we shortened it a little bit. But I still think it was important to do that, given that all of you are, are here today. A little bit about Crescent Real Estate. We are a Texas-based real estate company. We are an owner, operator, and developer of Class A commercial and residential real estate. The pictures at the bottom are some of our greatest hits, famous baby pictures, whatever you want to call them. But the point I'd like to make here is that whether we are developing here in Horseshoe Bay or in Fort Worth, Texas, across the street from the Modern Art Museum or the Kimball Art Museum, which we've recently done, we understand that construction is not always pleasant, and it's important, very important, to be good neighbors. On the left, you'll see the original master plan for Summit Rock. By right on this site, there was a hundred and fourteen units of custom lots and then some cottage homes. And we looked at that and said, how can we refine this, maintain the beauty of the site? You know, use it as much as humanly possible and not, you know, move things around as much as possible. And what we did, and what we landed on, very intentionally, we, we reduced the density, knowing that we were reducing the density by twenty-two units from 114 to 92. And we think we have ninety-two of some of the better lots with some amazing views in all of Horseshoe Bay. One other attribute of Horseshoe Bay that I think, or sorry, of Atten Hill that I think is important to bring up is that for those that buy a lot, you have to start construction on your home within two years, or you're fined $10,000 by the HOA. And some people might ask why we're doing that. It's very intentional. We don't want investors and speculators coming in here and buying lots and not building homes. We've seen enough of those communities across, you know, many areas, and we don't think that that is in the best interest of cities or communities. We're not here just to sell lots. We're here to build a community. And I think that that's a very important distinction for, for what the purpose of this project is. Clearly, there's a lot of rock onsite, and very large rock that's not transportable in its current state. If, Rick, if you could point, that is a Horseshoe Bay Resort water bottle on top of that rock for frame of reference. So the rock onsite is massive. And I wish there were multiple options and better options, but there are really only two on how to deal with it. You can either process it onsite, which would require the crusher and the conditional use permit, or you do it offsite. And we, no matter how you look at it, it's, you know, and how you analyze it, it's, you know, the evidence is pretty clear to us that the, if, if the goal here is to minimize the disruption on people's daily life, the onsite method is, is the clear choice. Some of this, we did have a capital O, I believe, in our last, and a capital C. It's all right. Somehow that went away. Part of this was talked about in Rick's presentation, but, you know, for the state and local regulations, you know, we decided we could, we were happy to go above and beyond and be good neighbors. Instead of operating the rock crushing activity from seven to seven, we heard that five o'clock is very meaningful around here. People want to get outside. They want to go on their back porches. They want to, you know, hang out with friends, go for walks. That's fine. We're more than willing to reduce the crushing. Someone asked at the meeting on Tuesday, how about you start at nine? And we're trying to fit the balance between operating with enough hours to where we can get done as quickly as humanly possible. So we, but we, we heard that five o'clock was an important time. We're easily willing to meet that. I also understand that six days could be a lot to deal with. So we are just fine doing this Monday through Friday, not Monday through Saturday, and excluding all public holidays. And then finally, per the state, to operate a rock crusher, you have to be with a minimum of 300 feet from a residence. We're fine being 700. And as Rick showed on the map, all those locations are at least 700 feet from the nearest residence. And finally, and also as Rick said, you know, we had the request about a third-party, Horseshoe Bay hired inspector monitoring dust and noise onsite. And not only did we say yes, we said we'd pay for it. We understand that's important to you all, so we're happy to pay for that as well. I wanted to put the pictures of the rock crusher and the rock hammer up, just because there's distinctions, and, and Rick talked about both of them. The first one is the rock crusher is regulated by the TCEQ. It's a state environmental watchdog. They monitor the dust via those sprayers that you see circled up top. And with a, and with a rock hammer, you know, what we can do and what we will do is continue to spray all the stockpiles. But there is not a way to put a sprayer or a nozzle on a rock hammer whilst operating. And just to be clear, in both, in the, in the onsite method with a crusher, we will use some rock hammering. But we want to minimize that as much as humanly possible, for all the reasons that everyone in this room knows. It's lived through, you know, the Summit Rock clubhouse construction. And we want to use rock crushing because that we can regulate and control dust that way. The offsite method is only the use of rock hammer, which is just, it's not regulated, and it's much more difficult to control dust. So when you process all the rock that's on the Atten Hill site, you come up with about 88,000 cubic yards of usable material. We are planning on using 65% of that material onsite for the construction of the infrastructure. That's backfill, filling utility trenches, and grading. The other 35% needs to go, to go offsite. So on the onsite method, we would use as little rock hammering as humanly possible to hit massive rock into something that's smaller, from, we'll say, we'll have a visual here in a second, but from, we'll say, a mid-sized car to a washing machine. Right? But here, I'll go to the offsite first. It's okay, just go to that. Visually, this is easier to see. From the offsite process, you take a rock hammer and a rock hammer only, no crusher. You have massive rock the size of a car. You hit that with a rock hammer and as many times as you can to break it into something about the size of a washing machine. You then have to use that same rock hammer to hammer over and over and over and over until it is the size of a volleyball and transportable in a truck. Once again, with a rock hammer, it's much harder to control dust. We will sprinkle and spray as much as humanly possible, but that rock hammer does not have a water nozzle to, to control the dust like a rock crusher does. And the result of breaking all of that down, hauling all of that material to burn it, is 13,000 trucks over 14 months, which is about 10,000 more trucks than it would require by processing this onsite. processing this on site. So if you go to on-site, you'll see the biggest difference is you don't need the rock hammer nearly as much because once you hammer it from the size of a car to the size of a washing machine, it goes into the crusher where it's controlled, regulated by the TCEQ, and it processes it down to usable material. We will use 65% of that, like I said, on site, only requiring 35% of it to be hauled off, which we have to pay to get it hauled off. We don't make any money off of that. But that will then go to burn it, which would only be 3,300 trucks over six months, 10,000 fewer trucks and eight months less of construction timeline. Before I keep going, does anyone have any questions? Or should I just keep going?
No.
Okay. Rick, please, another one? This is just a visual where we plan on starting as soon as possible, right after Labor Day, and we would go until February. Little rock hammer as possible, as much rock crushing. If we were to do it offsite, we would use the rock hammer, starting in September and going all the way through October 2026. We don't think that's in the best interest of anyone in this room to have to deal with that nuisance, as Rick referred to it. It is. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read all the, the TCEQ requirements, but it is regulated by an environmental watchdog group in the state, you know, in the state of Texas. And the one thing I do want to point out is the second bullet, permanently mounted spray bars to maintain compliance with the dust emissions. As the rock goes into this machine, it is sprayed with that water. And as Rick said, you know, the, any dust is not coming from that machine. It's coming from, you know, the, the machines that are putting it in there. And we need to sprinkle and spray some of that stuff to mitigate all that dust. With a, with a rock hammer, if you have an issue with any of the dust, there's not an environmental agency you can call in the state of Texas to discuss that. If we have an issue here, there is a number and we do not want the TCEQ coming out to our site. They, if someone calls and puts in a complaint, they know exact location of the crusher and they'll come out. We're okay with these requirements because it allows us to govern our contractors and subcontractors. So some people think that these kind of regulations that we would walk away from, no, we invite these. This allows us to force our contractors and subcontractors to do their jobs. And finally, I want to point out that not only has the LCR approved our site and construction plans, they affirmed that this rock crusher complies with all the existing LCR permits and ordinances. The LCR does not give out affirmations very easily. We got ours within days. Next slide, please. In talking about the, the truck traffic, I, I know this is a very big deal to everyone here. That's why, you know, we think on-site is so much better since we're using 65% of this material. Crush it on-site, that eliminates 10,000 truck trips, eight months of duration. And we think that, and, you know, now that we have access to turn left on Summit Rock and we're going to put up a sign that encourages everyone to turn left, it's faster, they're incentivized to do it. We want people off of 2147. Having the ability to turn left is a game changer for us and we will do everything we can to direct all traffic left on 71 to 281.
Question about the water. What is the source of the water that's going to be used?
It is city water.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We don't believe there'll be any runoff because it's, the LCR makes us put certain erosion controls up there to where there won't be any runoff.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not, I'll, I'll speak to that. They're not allowed to have any runoff from the site. They'll have to put some sort of either vegetative filter strips or something similar to that, some LCR approved deal to, to stop that from going off. No, sir. Correct?
With air quality, you know, once again, it's very difficult to, you know, we will spray, again, the stockpiles, but it's very difficult to, to monitor the air quality or to really contain it with a rock hammer. It's, it's much, much easier to do so with the rock crusher, with the, with the spray bars that are attached. I mean, our goal is that, is to put as much in the crusher and as less with the, with the rock hammers so that, you know, when, when we do put it through the crusher, that any dust that comes out of that settles on site, never leaves the site. And in terms of emissions, by eliminating 10,000 truckloads having to come through, that reduces emissions by, you know, 77%, the equivalent of 700,000 pounds of CO2 emissions. Eliminating that would, you know, is the equivalent of 32,000 gallons of diesel or 350,000 pounds of coal. With regards to noise, as, you know, Rick said, you know, we, we monitored from 700 feet, both a rock crusher and a rock hammer. And the crusher is about 78 decibels. The rock hammer is about 89, 90. Something that I learned about noise is that it is not linear, it's logarithmic and to where every 10 increased, 10 decibel increase is twice as loud to the human ear. So I've tried to make it a policy in my house to not have conversations with my family around kitchen appliances, but if I did, I think I could probably have a conversation around a washing machine. I doubt I could have a conversation around a blender. It's just, it's, the, the difference is, is, is massive between those two. And this slide summarizes, no matter how you slice this, no matter how you look at this, you know, the, the on-site method is, you know, is much better. If the goal here is to minimize the disruption to people's daily lives, it's pretty hard to argue with the on-site method. I don't think anyone here wants loud dusty rock hammers hammering for 14 months, inviting 13,000 trucks and an additional 700,000 pounds of CO2 in this neighborhood. What we're trying to do and what our commitment to everyone in this room is, is that we want to do this as fast as possible, as quiet as possible. We are fine being regulated to keep as dust to a minimum as humanly possible and keep both trucks and CO2 emissions out of the neighborhood. Yeah, this is an appendix. This is just a, this isn't a, not an exhaustive list, but this is a list of what our contractors and subcontractors have, have worked with rock crushers in and around the central Texas area. So it is a common, a common tool.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I would invite anyone who has questions to ask, please. It's up to, it's not going to be us hiring that person. It's going to be the city hiring them.
No, this is a company that was recommended to us very highly. The name of the company is Crown?
It's Joe Crown over with IGS Incorporated.
And he has, is very well-known in the central Texas area for doing this kind of work and has actually been really helpful to Rick in, in his discussions and, and helping Rick set up discussions with Atten Hill that, things that we wanted. And we told them, this, this came highly recommended from a, a person who runs quarries and, and does this kind of work on a consulting basis. And I think that, I think this, this is probably a really good company for us to use from, based on the recommendations that we've had.
He's going to set up. I'll let you speak this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that part. So, yes, he has, he has specialized equipment, so he also does third-party monitoring. So he monitored the blasting at the Summit Rock clubhouse. So he has seismic, air quality, sound, several different things. And then he'll issue reports. So there'll be a daily report that I'll review. If there's any anomaly, obviously, we'll report it, but it'll be instantaneous. So he'll have monitors out there. If something trips, it will trip. He will call me. We will notify him and that'll be.
Just let me say, this was not a point of contention for us. We're totally fine. We're 100% fine with that. If anything happens on that site, we want to know about it so that we can hold our contractors and general contractors accountable for that. So we're, we're, we're okay with that. Yes, sir. Yeah.
If you want to. I've got an answer for that.
Well, I mean, I haven't done high-level computer level monitoring on that. That, that, and I appreciate that. That's why we have the importance of making sure that we water the stockpiles and why we prefer less hammering and more crushing because that would.
Could I, it, could I ask you to go to a microphone so that, because the council can't even hear what you're saying? And, and I'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes if you wouldn't mind.
So.
And could we have your name, please?
My name's Robert Blanch. I actually live, one of the closest properties to the one on this. Wind is a huge, as well as temperature and humidity levels, huge influence factor on how far and how noise, as well as dust, et cetera, travels. The problem here is if you go do statistical analysis over 10, 15 years, like I actually did, when we get into September, the wind is such that it's going to carry the noise and dust direct line towards essentially Golden Bear, the neighborhood. So I, I just wonder, has any analysis been done in terms of the sequencing here and how things are done? And to give you another example, I mean, you're going into winter, leaves are going to drop, et cetera, and that's also going to make the propagation of noise and dust much more likely so than during the summer. No, very valid concern. So our ordinance is condition agnostic. So the way it reads is the property line, when noise exits the property line, we'll have sensors there. It has to be below 85 decibels regardless of weather conditions. So it's a fair point. It'll be more difficult for them to comply depending on that. And then the dust is the same thing. The TCQ regulates, and again, I'm not an air quality expert, but it's particulates per million at X feet, X feet, X feet. He'll set up, when he, show me the proposal, it, it's, it's got radial lines, so there's radiuses. He'll set a couple up. It won't just be one. So we'll make a point. I'll make sure, although I assume he knows, but I'll make sure he understands to, to assume where the prevailing wind is, maybe put a couple over there, but, but it can shift too, so. Yeah. But it is a good point. So, yes, sir, we.
Well, in September being the most likely for the wind conditions for maximum noise and dust, like more than 50% of the time.
Yes, sir.
It's probably not the ideal time to do Site 1.
Uh, we could talk about that, too. I mean, if council has no objection to it, then we won't necessarily hold them to move in this order. We'll do whatever the site suggests.
You know, I, I just feel like if, if it's a super windy day.
Probably not.
You're probably, that's probably not going to be a day you choose to do anything that's going to create a lot of dust because you're going to know that it.
It'll trip the sensors.
That it's going to create the dust. So, okay.
They'll want to.
Just to be clear, it, it's not, I'm not talking about super windy days. I'm just talking about.
Yes.
It doesn't take a lot of wind to carry the noise and dust.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Blanch.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good point.
Yep. Frank's learning.
There's not a perfect solution.
Can't hear you, Frank.
It's not a perfect solution.
Yeah, but you have to talk into it.
All right. There's not a perfect solution. To me, the gating factor here is six months versus 14, 14 to 18 months if we haul it out. So, and the rock hammers, guys, are going to create more dust than the, the rock crusher. Keep in mind, the rock crusher is controlled. It's controlled by TCEQ, which is a blessing. That gets watered down all the time. The rock hammer is, and if, so if we had to carry this all offsite, that's twice as long and that's, that's breaking up not the size of a car, as big as a car, and you're having to break it down to the size of a volleyball or a basketball. That alone makes twice as much hammering, making twice as much dust. So the way to minimize the dust here is with the rock crusher as opposed to every time you use the hammer, you're going to have to hammer it. You talk about hammering it down to a washing machine and then they can put it in the crusher. Washing machine has to be broken down four times to be the size it can go into a truck. So you have to think of in terms of, this isn't a, a win-win. This is the best case scenario versus the alternative. The alternative is not good. Going 14 months and hauling all that stuff out is not the answer.
Okay.
I wish there was a better way, but there isn't.
I'm going to move to the public input here and, and I, so both Mr. Dyer and Rick will still be here. We can call on them again. But let's get to the people who have signed up. And let me just say, I'll remind you that we ask you to speak for three minutes. Look at her, her, her little light over here. If, if what you want to say has already been said, just say, I'd like to agree with them. You don't have to repeat it. We just want to know what your position is. But having said that, we, we want to hear.
Quick question. So I understand the trucks are going to come out of Summit Boulevard on the left and then straight up that hill.
Our, our intention, our hope, and as, as Mr. Dyer said, their hope, is that they will come out of the, the job site, go across, go across that new bridge that's there, turn left and go out to 71 and exit the neighborhood that way. The alternative, and, and we're now talking if this goes through, about 3,000 trucks over a six-month period. So you figured that out, Rick? How many a day did you think?
Uh, it's, yeah, you're, you're around two or three an hour.
Okay. So the alternative, and, you know, it's, as, as Frank said, none of this is perfect and we don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know how the council's going to feel about this. But the alternative, and I know how the community's going to feel about this, is if they turn right and go on Summit Rock Boulevard and then go all the way through the community because they would be turning right on 2147, going to Starbucks to go to, to Burnet. I know that's not a popular option. So even though Summit Rock Boulevard is not a public street, we cannot tell them they can't do that, but the developer can encourage them to, they have permission to, we're going to explain to them that it's shorter to do it that way. And one further thing that we will do is if we see a lot of these trucks on 2147, we'll ask our PD to stop them, inspect them, be sure they don't have any holes in their tarp, be sure it's tied down on the front and the back, waste 30 or 45 minutes of their time and it won't happen for once. So, okay, we're going to go to the public input here. And as I said, we appreciate all of you being here and we want to hear what you say. So the first person who signed up is Pam Stevens from High Mesa. Thank you very much, Pam. We appreciate you being here. And now the other, the only other part, Kathy, do you want to talk about this one? Are you talking about the other?
The next one.
Oh, okay. All right. So I don't think anybody else signed up, but is there anyone else in? Would you like to speak? Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
I think this anticipated, kind of knew it was going to be last year. It was anticipated before the issue of the going on building up.
Rick, do you want to address that?
Sure. Yeah.
Could I have your name, sir?
George Shaw.
Thank you. Shaw, S-H-A-W.
No, so, no, we did not know there was, they were going to process it on-site. I think for the contractor they use, it's pretty typical and so it's subjective. From the city's standpoint, we don't see rock crushing is super typical, although there is precedent in Summit Rock when it was initially developed, they did use a rock crusher up around the water tower area, et cetera. Not as many homes there, obviously, so a little bit different. But, but there is some precedent in Summit Rock for that. In other parts of the state, it's not as big of a deal. I live in Burnet and so in Burnet, a completely different community, it's pretty common. Most of them, they, they're processing stuff on-site. So a little bit different. So to be completely honest, I chair the development committee that, that third parties come to when they seek approval for subdivisions, et cetera, and we make sure they've got Development Services, Fire, Public Works and Utilities under control. Quite frankly, I didn't think to ask. And so some of that is a little bit on staff for not asking ahead of time. We know now. And so it is, it is something we ask now. I still think, all things equal, if the goal is to, and the way it's represented to me is the goal is we want to reduce noise, duration and dust, I still think this is a better option. It would have been nice, though, to have addressed it upfront, so.
Okay. And so if you would just go to the podium, speak your, state your name and we'd be happy to hear from you.
Yeah, my name is Joe Vore. I live in Pecan Creek. But I had a question during the operation, if there is an exceedance of either, you know, any of the criteria, the, the, the noise, the dust levels, et cetera, will the. the dust levels, et cetera, will the, is there a system set up to shut down the operation until that can be fixed or how's that going to work? Because I, what I would worry about is the, the operation continue for the rest of the day and then there's a big problem with either dust or noise and people are inconvenienced. Is there some kind of a system set up to shut the operation down until they can fix whatever was exceeded?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that is an excellent question. And so, the monitors will trip immediately, they will contact, it won't just be me because believe it or not, I do take off sometimes, and so there'll be a group of us in Development Services and in the City Manager's Office. And so, we'll get a report immediately from IGS, we will notify, so we'll process it like any notice of violation since it's a CUP if it's approved. And so, I will reach out to their representative, which is their construction manager, and tell them you've got a violation, and so somebody is going to come onsite and we're going to, you're going to, we're going to have to observe that you've corrected it. If it's a fluke, say, I don't know a good example, but say there is a dust plume in an area that wasn't supposed to, we're going to come and then we're going to monitor for compliance with all the requirements of the CUP. Are you watering it? Is the truck there? Are the spray bars operational? If they're still there, then we're going to come up with a solution. Just because it's not enumerated in the CUP, the important thing is they have to comply with the TCQ permit. So, if there's something we haven't thought of, they're still required to comply with that permit, so we will come up with a solution.
Thank you. I saw another hand there, yes, ma'am. I'll get to you in just a moment.
Just another quick question, what is the water consumption of the crush?
And you're, could you, you're Sandra?
Yes, ma'am, Sandra McFarland, sorry.
Sandra McFarland.
If y'all have the exact, what I saw is it's about two to three thousand gallons per day, which is around what a home would use if they're irrigating, so kind of a normal single-family residence, although defining normal in Horseshoe Bay is a little bit different because you are full-time and part-timers, but do y'all have an exact?
Are you all going to fill your water trucks with city potable water?
Yeah, we're going to fill them from the, from the hydrant meter, the temporary hydrant meter that we have, the construction meter.
Thank you. Yes?
You can stand here.
Yeah, you can go with the...
My name's Betty Newsom and I live in Tuscaloosa.
Could you give us your name, please?
Betty Newsom, like that bad governor. Can you hear me?
All right.
I was just going to say something in support of how the regulations were developed by the TCEQ. I read all the stuff, you know, your concern about the wind and, and whatnot, they came up with that three hundred feet from a lot of math and science, ten micron-sized dust particles and winds and whatnot, so there was a lot of science used to create the three hundred-foot distance, and now they're more than doubling it. So, hypothetically, we should be a little bit safer than the standard requirements of TCEQ. And it, it was scientifically developed, not just like, you know, haphazardly deciding how to get to that three hundred-foot thing, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public have anything to add to this conversation? Okay, council members, would you like to add anything? Buck, do you want to say anything? Elaine? Larry? Frank, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think...
Okay. You know, just from my part, I, I mean, I really, I think it's very important that what we're voting on here today is a conditional use permit because if this is approved, then it sets a precedent. If it's not approved, then the precedent is not in our favor. The precedent is this is not normal construction activity. And if you want to put a rock crusher in Horseshoe Bay, you have got to go and get a conditional use permit and they are going to put all these restrictions on you that you would not have, for example, if all you used was a, an air hammer. So, from that standpoint, it, I feel like it provides some security for the community. If the council passes this, it's, it, there's not a good, there's not a good solution, there's not a perfect answer. I think Atton Hill would prefer that they didn't have to deal with this and we certainly would prefer that we didn't, but we don't have the, we don't have the ability, we have to make a choice. These, these volunteers sitting before you today have to make a choice. And so, at this point, council, if you don't have anything else to add, then we're going to add, we're going to close this public hearing at four fifteen and I'm ready for motion. If anybody would like to, I think there is a...
Trying to get to it.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I let my thing close, can't tell you what page it's on. Page thirty-eight, there's a, a motion, and don't forget to, whoever's going to make this motion, if you make a motion to, if your, a motion is to approve it, that we want the water, the water truck manned. Oh, wait, that's not the right page, I gave you the wrong page.
Fourteen?
No, no, I gave you the wrong page.
I move to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-one as requested by the applicant and presented by staff with the attached conditions.
And there was, there's some, there's not a condition that the water truck can be manned?
Yes, with the water truck, the manned water truck.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Councilmember Morgan to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one with the conditions enumerated in Exhibit C and additionally to make a note that the water truck is to be manned. Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Great, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you for your patience in, in, in this. I, I promise you that, that, that we hope, we all collectively hope, that this is, is way worse than everybody thinks it might be. And I think that Rick and his staff will do everything they can to make sure of that.
Way better, yeah, she meant better.
So, anyway, thank you for that. Now, we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is, I'm going to open a public hearing at four fifteen. If anybody wants to leave, you're welcome to, we, we're happy to have you, but you don't have to stay. Four fifteen, we're going to open this public hearing on Ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, approving conditional use authorization to allow for the use of track BBB two A of Horseshoe Bay. It's actually to allow for two temporary parking lots and I'll let Roy go into the details of this.
Yes, ma'am, compared to the previous one, this seems like a walk in the park. Basically, we have a couple of sites that are not particularly attractive right now because they're not being kept up. The staff thinks that the, their request to turn these into temporary parking lots for a period not to exceed five years. One of the things that we think was very important, a concession that they made, because they're not going to install curbs around this parking lot, that they agreed to plant to give people an idea of where they need to quit driving so they don't leave the paved surface, that'll help make it even slightly more attractive than it might otherwise be. You know, compared to the continuation of, of the current condition of the property, the staff thinks this is, will be a, a great improvement to anybody that lives in the area or that even drives by the area. It's, it's pretty much a nuisance now.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
All right. My understanding, these, these particular lots are designated as three-story parking lots.
One of them is.
One of them is?
One of them is, I don't like the word moratorium, I prefer the, the word development reserve, but there, there is no zoning entitlement on one of the lots. But the other one is in fact zoned for a parking lot or a parking structure up to three, three lots.
Three stories, so this is better than a three-story parking lot, okay.
Well, let's, let's distinguish which one you're talking about, the, the Cove West property is part of the planned development that was, that was developed when all of the waters was entitled, which is before the city was a city. And so, that has already been designated as a possible three-story...
It's been amended over, over time, but the current designation is for a parking lot.
Okay, and the other site, which is it, that, the one that's currently used a lot is a parking lot at the circle, that is just developmental reserve.
Right, there, there's never been any proposed use or approved use for that property.
Okay, okay. Okay, is there anyone here from the city, would you like to, let's see, did you speak? Kathy, you signed up to speak, Kathy Riden signed up to speak. Okay, Boyce, okay, no.
I know this is not as exciting as rock crushing, but it's important to me because I live next door to that lot. So, my name is Boyce Britton, I'm at one oh-three Cove East, you know, and I really urge you to deny the Horseshoe Bay Development LLC's request to use the lot next to my home for temporary overflow parking. While they call it temporary, this approval could last five years. And when added to the last three years that has already been used as a staging area, neighbors like me are facing nearly a decade of disruption. First, this plan will harm property values and neighbor character, neighborhood character. The resort is asking to skip curbing, landscaping, lighting, and even full-size parking spaces. That's not a safe or attractive improvement. It's a dirt lot that will quickly become a mud pit and an eyesore. Second, this lot has already been abused. It was used for years as the staging area for the latest construction of the waters. The increased traffic, noise, dust, runoff, and unsightly conditions have been detrimental to me. When I tried to sell my home last fall, buyers were deterred because of the lot's condition and use. Third, runoff and erosion from the previous use are already damaging my property. The lack of grass to hold water has led increased water flow and erosion on my property. Dirt and debris from the runoff has emptied into the channel, my house and other three lots, lots are on. This is the only access we have to the lake and it's leading to reduced depth and boat access in the channel. More cars and compaction will only worsen the problem. Finally, residents have not been given sufficient notice or information. The letter I received contained no details about the plan. I only found the specifics buried in the council agenda. This is not adequate for those of us who are impacted. Environmental and use studies should be done before any decision is made. If parking is such a problem, then Horseshoe Bay needs to have a more long-term solution and not a short-term fix. I respectfully ask that the council deny this CUP. At a minimum, if the council chooses to consider approval, I urge for you to separate the two lots for consideration independently, require more complete information to be provided to the affected homeowners, request independent environmental and use studies, evaluate other properties for consideration, and impose meaningful conditions to protect surrounding homeowners.
Thank you.
And personally, I don't find two grass lots as offending at this point, it's much better than what I've been putting up with for the last three years. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Britton. And Kathy, do you want to speak? Kathy Riden?
I'm Kathy Riden, I'm a Realtor and co-owner of Horseshoe Bay One Realty. And I will tell you that we did have Boyce's house on, on the market, and it is a gorgeous two million dollar plus house on the water, and we could have sold it multiple times over, but everybody loved the house, they thought it was priced well, went on and on, but the lot next door was what killed it every time. It was very unsightly, he did have to put up with that mess for about three years. We talked about, we took it off the market because of the negative reviews basically in concern from a buyer. And so, we said, okay, we'll take it off until the waters are finished and then put it back on the market. We've been talking about doing that again until this came up. That lot now is a nice grass, it's not unattractive at all, it's, it's been sod or whatever seeded and it is not an eyesore any longer. When he purchased that property, it, it's planned, I think it's called planned development commercial, when you have a property that is a residence and it's next door to something like that, you would expect to have a nice structure built at some point in the future, not a, not a dirt or, or a chip seal or whatever parking lot, okay? And so, I can just tell you, if you will put yourself in his shoes and if you wanted that by your house next door, how would you feel? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Staff, do you know, I, I'd like a little clarification and I'm, I might call on another man that probably knows the answer to this, Ron Mitchell. When this, when, when the waters were entitled, or do you all know this, was this indeed a, going, going to be a parking garage? Do you know anything about that, Ron?
Right, it's part of the PD.
Okay, part of the PD, okay. So, was it going to be a, a parking garage?
Well...
Or just any, any commercial building?
Or a surface lot, it mentions both.
Well, that's, that's the one, the one adjacent to this lot.
You have your, look at your, your packet.
It doesn't, it's too small.
Cove East is across from the, what's that restaurant?
Waterfront Grill.
Right.
Waterfront Grill, it's across, yeah, and the waters.
It's where they, isn't it where they had the boat, they parked the boat trailers for the show last weekend or something, was that, was that what that was?
Yeah, okay.
So, anyway, it's, there's two, there's two grass lots there on the right-hand side and this is one of them, I believe, so, okay.
It may not be much consolation, but there is, if you look at the enumerated conditions, number two is the perimeter of the parking lot shall be surrounded by fast-growing shrubs of a prior-approved species, at least some visual. I understand it may not be exactly what you're hoping for, but there was some consideration from the staff level that, you know, you, you don't want to look outside and see several cars.
Do you know how many parking spaces they've got envisioned for that lot?
Yes, ma'am, it's in your packet, there's a specific site plan. And, and, and once again, uh...
I'm looking at the site plan, I just don't see that number that I just asked you.
No, I don't, I'd have to go back and count them, but there's...
Looks like forty-nine.
Fifty-six. Are you part of the resort, so, do you have anything you'd like to say on this?
My name's Ryan Morrow, a third-party project manager for the resort, and, yeah, so it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a dirt lot, we're talking about doing a chip seal surface, so it'd be a layer of base brought in and then basically a thin layer of asphalt, it'll be black, blacktop, not mud pit, and then we're going to stripe it, you know, with stripes and a fire lane in there, and then screen the entire perimeter with landscaping. I don't think there is any requirement for it, I, I don't know if there's a requirement for a setback, but we were going to do a self-imposed, you know, twenty foot away from the house, which is I think fifteen foot off the property line, you know, a, a good barrier there between the residents. And we have a, a civil engineer who's done a drainage study, you know, to look at drainage to make sure, similar to the rock crushing, we're not allowed to, you know, discharge any water off of our site onto anyone else, so.
You have already happened.
And, and that's going to be improved as part of this project.
Yeah, why are you going to improve it?
We're going to put a cat, so right now, everything just goes basically to your driveway and there's a pipe that it goes, it's probably clogged with dirt, I imagine, okay? Yeah, it goes under that driveway and I don't know where it drains from there, but basically, we would take, put a grate over there on our side and then redirect it probably back towards the lake.
Construction will be, they'll, if y'all approve this, they'll still have to go through the development committee and go through, it'll have to comply with our drainage criteria, et cetera. And we will ask if they're going to crush rocks, so.
No rock crushing, but we'll take some.
But it, it will still have to meet construction standards and, and it can't, by state law, it can't increase drainage onto your lot, that would be, it's a civil issue, but we... That would be, it's a civil issue, but we, we look at that, and so does ACC, so.
And they're required to meet both permanent and temporary erosion control methods, all those things. Drainage, the whole bit. The difference between chip seal and regular paving has to do with the length of time that it, before it will start requiring maintenance. It will, obviously, it won't last as long as, as normal paving, but it's not intended to.
And we're required, I think, twice a year to reevaluate it and maintain it if necessary.
That's one of your enumerated conditions, is if, if we see it requires maintenance, that we'll, you know, we'll address it and make them do it.
Ryan, why are you all going for a temporary parking lot?
So I think everyone who's been to the resort knows, you know, parking is a, it's, it's an immediate need that needs to be addressed. There's, we don't want to do a knee-jerk reaction and put a parking lot, a permanent parking lot, in the wrong site just to be demoed and, you know, when we need to put a building there later, because unfortunately, that has happened. And so this five-year conditional use will allow us to do a proper master planning study, find out where the needs are, where the best location is, and then design and build a proper permanent parking lot, you know, down the road. There, it's on Buffalo.
Yes.
Yeah, where, so where the event pavilion construction is now, where the fence is on the boulevard, we are actually designing and permitting a parking lot down there. That's part of, that's, that, I can't, I can't, that won't be in tomorrow, though. That takes time to design and permit and build. So that's part of the long-term plan. There will be, when you pull, if you're going north on the boulevard and you take a left on Buffalo, we're designing a parking lot. There will be one at the end of that road and then probably on the left side also.
So the one on Cove East is going to provide forty-nine, I just found it, Roy, forty-nine parking lot spaces, and the one at the circle will be 127 spaces.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? What's the staff recommendation on this?
We think it's an improvement over what's been going on over there over the past several years. You know, I know that that may not be much consolation, but it's the reality. We don't see a whole lot of significant impact between a permanent parking, surface parking lot in the same area. It'll have a similar impact on the neighboring property. The only difference is it'll last longer.
To clarify what he's saying, too, so they could, technically, by PD, they could apply for a permanent parking lot here, and we would be compelled to grant that because it's a permitted use. So the difference of this is it's temporary, which y'all can't put some condition on it since it's CUP, but they're entitled to a parking lot there, unfortunately. So technically, they could apply for a permanent one that would be permanent. So the temporary nature of it is because it's, essentially because it's chip and seal. And, and they don't want to put lighting, which with the house right there, that's, we probably don't want lights there. I mean, just as far as nuisance goes, so it seemed to make sense in that regard.
Well, I mean, there, there is, you know, there is an option, counsel. You could say you're only going to approve one of them, or we can, or neither of them. So we, have any more questions?
Yeah, well, you just brought, we can approve one of them, but we don't have to approve both of them. Okay, good.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we're going to close this public hearing at 4:34, and I will entertain a motion if someone's ready. And that would be on page thirty-four, isn't that where we are?
Thirty-eight.
Something like, sorry. The proposed motion is on page thirty-eight, counsel. Nobody wants to make a motion, or you can't find it?
Looking.
You guys have got to get these computers going. This is not that hard.
Now, I don't want to approve, the motion is written.
Well, then make your motion.
The circle, the 127 lot, is, is that east or is that west?
BBB2A or whatever it is.
It's one on the circle.
On the circle, that one.
That's port. You access it off port.
Well, in the, in the, in the, in the discussion up here, I think he was asking you, one of them is the lot 15042, Horseshoe Bay, Platte 15-26, track BBB2A, which one is that?
BBB2A is the one that's often referred to as the moratorium lot.
Okay, so the one, that's the moratorium, that's track BBB2A is the one that's at the circle, Frank? And the overflow parking in zone A4, is that the other one?
Yes, ma'am.
I assume you're trying to make a motion to approve. Could y'all help him on telling?
Yes, ma'am, it's the lot number.
All right, what I'm trying to do is, I do not want, I'll, I think we could agree on the one around the circle, the other one I don't want to approve.
That's, that's lot 15042.
Which, which is that?
Lot 15042.
Is that the one he wants or the one he doesn't?
That's the one he wants to exclude.
Yeah, that's the one off Cove East.
All right, so the one I want to approve is 15041?
No, sir. The one you want to approve is track BBB2A.
Two A, okay.
Right, that is correct.
Is it all part of the same ordinance, or do we have to split the ordinance?
Well, we could, we could amend it, right. You can approve one of the parking lots and not the other.
I move to approve lot 2A, permitting the use of the legally described property as temporary resort hotel with the conditions that have been discussed. The setback, the chip seal, painted landscaping on that one, and I do not want to approve the other one.
For a period of five years, Frank?
That's fine, for five years.
Okay, is that an adequate?
Is that good enough, or did I screw it up totally? Absolutely. Be my guest.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-2020-25, approving a conditional use authorization to allow for the use of track BBB-2A of Horseshoe Bay, Platte number 15.67, and not approving lot 15042 of Horseshoe Bay, Platte number 15.26, as temporary hotel overflow parking in zone 4A, Horseshoe Bay proper, in accordance with the enumerated conditions outlined in the ordinance for a period not to exceed five years.
Okay, and those conditions include the setback, the landscaping, the chip seal, the painted, and an actual reference, so they're not jumping over the curb?
Yes, sir, and, and there is a site plan that ties him down to the.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Hosea. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilmembers, do you understand this motion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So now do we have to reject the other one?
Well, no, sir. What, what we'll do is we'll amend the draft ordinance before it's signed, change the legal description, and delete one of the site plans.
Perfect.
And understand that if, if the property owner comes to us and wants to build a permanent parking lot there.
We have to consider it.
They're going to build a permanent parking lot.
All right.
It may, it, I mean, whether, it may include.
It'll go to the DRC.
And it may not. Okay, thank you. Did I close the public hearing? Oh, good, well, I did it right. Okay, thank you. Then we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, we're going to open a public hearing at 4:40 on ordinance number 2025-26, amending chapter 14 of the zoning ordinances, and this is a kind of a, I'm going to let Roy describe it. It's 4:40, we're opening the public hearing, so Roy, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's just a bunch of procedural requirements that we think are important. They, they don't always become an issue, but they're, they're frequently become an issue here. Some of them are simply restate what I might call best practices. But, but some of them represent a departure. The big departure primarily, I think, than, than what you've been doing, and maybe some of the more recent applications are a good example to that. When somebody gets denied or there is opposition, and they take that lesson to heart and amend their application in according to that opposition, that's something that, that's considered perfectly fine. If, however, their intent is to come back with the exact same application six months later that was denied for, for a valid reason, it's questionable whether six months is, is fair to the public to keep showing back up and opposing these things. As a result, it's pretty common for the, the requirement to be much longer, to deny the exact same application from being resubmitted. Somewhere between one and two years is actually much more common. But if they're willing to amend their application according to that opposition, we welcome that as soon as they're ready to reapply.
Clarification. If we denied an application, six months later, they resubmit the same application. That wouldn't come in front of the council, though.
Under your current ordinance, it would.
All right, well, we need to change that.
And that, that's what we're recommending, that they must.
Now I understand.
They must come back with something different or wait much longer.
Okay, all right, agreed.
And is that, I mean, in reading all this exhibit A, it's pretty much what it, most of what is in here.
It's, it's, not all ordinance is say it, but if ordinance addresses these issues, that's how they address it.
But what is this other, it says amendments to any application following the formal determination of a complete application by developmental services, but before a public hearing has been noticed or placed on a published agenda, shall be deemed to be a withdrawal.
Yes, ma'am. I'll give you an example of what, what happens here. In order to get on an agenda because of the deadline, we get applications that aren't complete. And up until the day of the public hearing, they continue to amend their applications. Sandra and I actually had fourteen different staff reports we wrote for one application for one fee. That's, that's not fair to your staff, it's not fair to the public.
So this will correct that?
Yes, sir. You just heard this gentleman talk about inadequate notice for something that, imagine if that was a continually changing application, and, and he called in here multiple times, it would be a moving target.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the, in the audience have any questions to ask? Counsel, do you have any questions?
No, I think I got clarity.
Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing at 4:44, and if someone would like to make a motion, there is a motion proposed on page 53.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-26 as presented.
Motion from Councilmember Hosea, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wetherby, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, now we have one, two more public hearings. Going to open this one at 4:44, considering ordinance 2025-27, amending appendix A of ordinance 2023-19 regarding the image corridor, Roy.
Yes, ma'am. This is simply correcting what we think was the intent of the original ordinance. I think the one that we gave an example, if you guys remember, when you had a Gateway PD application that included some multifamily housing as part of it, the applicant as well as the staff, you know, imposed the image corridor and made sure that he developed in accordance with his requirements. But technically, if you go back and read the ordinance, it doesn't really apply to multifamily developments. And, you know, we, we basically are correcting that. The other significant correction we're making is we've discovered that there's a few spots along 2147 that include these reserve strips. There's nothing in that ordinance that continues to say, okay, even if it's only separated from the frontage by one of these reserve strips, that we still want you to comply with that image overlay. Just corrects that and makes you, you know, required. Obviously, we can't make somebody do something to a property they don't own, but we'll, we'll apply the rest of the requirements to the property that they do own, if you will. So we think these are just simply a little sloppy language in the original ordinance, and we're simply fixing that to make sure that everybody complies going forward or gets the necessary relief.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? Okay, we're going to close this public hearing at 4:46, and I'm entertaining a motion on page 58.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-27, correcting some of the language in the image corridor overlay district, referencing section 14.02.402C of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion, second, I have a motion from Councilmember Morgan, a second from Councilmember Hosea. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I, I just want to, I just would like to say that when we passed this image corridor ordinance three years ago, this is a massive piece of, a massive effort. A great deal of thought and study went into it. And if some of the wording wasn't exactly the way it needed to be, I don't believe it was sloppy work. I think it was an outstanding effort on the department, on the effort of the department and, and the staff, and I'm proud of that, of that legislation. So moving forward to the next public hearing on, at page, at 4:47, we're going to open a public hearing on the adoption of proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget for the city of Horseshoe Bay. And we opened this, but we don't, we defer it, don't we? We open the public?
You can open and close it, but then the motion will be to move the adoption of the proposed budget to be postponed.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Because we're not, we're not going to act on the budget today, so if anybody has any questions on the budget, you can. We had, we had it on the agenda, so we have to, we have to honor this item, but unless anyone has any questions at this time, we'll close the public hearing. So the, the motion that I will entertain is that we, we defer the adoption of the budget. If you look on page 82, it says you postpone the budget to the September 16th meeting.
Want a motion?
Did I not, okay, then I'm, I'm sorry. I'll close the public hearing at 4:48, and I'll entertain a motion, and there's a proposed motion on page 82.
I move the adoption of the proposed budget to be postponed until the next city council meeting set for September 16th, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Wetherby, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Councilmember Morgan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to business, and the first item we're going to discuss is the annual renewal of city employee benefits. Rachel, are you okay? We've gone over your time limit, haven't we, okay? Okay, all right, okay, good. Rachel Hearn is going to tell us about our benefits package, and this is good news, and I wanted to give Rachel an opportunity to brag a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'm super excited to report that we've secured excellent results for our benefit renewal this year at a very low cost to the city. For the past four years, we've negotiated successfully a rate pass or a 0% increase in our benefits. This year, we negotiated a very small increase of .01%. Our health savings account and high deductible plan increased by $1,023 annually. We measured our dental insurance against the market bench. We measured our dental insurance against the market benchmarks, and we determined that our orthodontal lifetime maximum, sorry, was a little bit low. So we did increase the orthodontal lifetime maximum to be more competitive against the market. With that increase, we saw $7,786 annually increase in our costs. Our vision coverage remained unchanged, so we did negotiate a rate pass for that. In our life and disability insurances, we've locked in a three-year rate pass for that, so we won't have to negotiate those again until 2027. Altogether, our total budget impact was $8,809. Considering our workforce size and how everything is going up in cost around us, that's a pretty small increase and a substantial savings compared to other cities. At this time, staff recommends approval of the renewal of employer-sponsored health benefits and changes to the benefit plans as presented.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Rachel? So our children will have straight teeth.
Absolutely. Mine need it right now, so...
Counsel, if you look on page 96, the motion that Rachel just read is there for you to make? If you would like to make a motion? Page 96.
We look for renewal of employer-sponsored health benefits and changes to benefit plans as recommended by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Waddell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Weatherby. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Now, we're going to go back into order, and we're going to move back up to page 83, Counsel. Who's going to... Rick, are you presenting this?
Uh, it is Roy, but I can.
Okay, either one of you, whichever. This is the consider, okay, so what this was, Counsel, in June, I will, Roy, I'll let you present it, if you want to.
Yes, ma'am. When the plat was in front of you, it happened to be on the same agenda where the previous conditional use application was withdrawn. The city attorney recommended that you therefore approve the conditional plat by adding a condition requiring it to comply with the zoning ordinance. Now that you have a conditional use approval that is compliant with the zoning ordinance, that condition becomes a little bit unnecessary. As a result, the applicant would request that they not be required to amend those plats and add that note, and would ask that you sign it without adding that. And now that the staff has an approved conditional use that covers that, we think that's reasonable.
Counsel, do you understand what the request is here? Okay, so when, in June, when you approved the plat for Atton Hill, you added the language to it that it would not include any drilling, mining, or...
I remember that.
Activity.
And added a note to that plat.
There was a note to the plat. So, you know, it's possible that anytime... Okay, so they're just asking us to remove that note, because, you know, when they sell a piece of property, are they going to have to add that plat? So, now that we've got the conditional use, it's really kind of redundant. So they're just, they're requesting that we remove it. Any other questions? Okay.
I move to approve Ordinance 2025-23 as presented by staff.
That's not it?
It's not an ordinance per se.
It's on page 84.
Yeah.
Sorry. No, it's good, though.
That's Molly's phone. This one says the same thing.
Oh, I'll make the motion. I move to approve Atton Hill at Summit Phase 1 final plat without the addition of plat note required by the city council in the previous condition approval on June 17, 2025. So I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. So I will sign your plat for you. Okay, now let's move on to Ordinance 2025-23, approving and adopting an amendment to the budgeted funds for fiscal year beginning October 24, ending September 2025. Molly, now, Counsel, we went into this quite a bit this morning. So I don't know how much you want to go into this, Molly, but you're welcome to present your report. Your audience is... Do they not love the budget amendments?
I guess not. I was excited they were all here for my financial statement preparation.
Obviously, it hurts your feelings.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We are proposing, the city staff is proposing some budget amendments. We did them in February and April, and now we're doing them again in August. It's page 86 of the agenda. There's five exhibits, A, B, C, D, and E for the utility, capital, general, multiple funds on D, and E is reclasses. As Mayor said, we've already gone over these, and does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, you want to go over it again?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 2025-23 as presented by staff.
I have a motion from Councilmember Morgan. Is there a second? Second from Councilmember Waddell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, and then the last piece of business on the agenda is Ordinance 2025-28, declaring unopposed candidates in the November 4th general election to be elected to office, canceling the November 4th general election, and doing all of the things it says. So, Counsel, do you have any questions? So we're going to cancel the election. We had one candidate file for the office of mayor, and one candidate filed for the office of city council. Two councils, two candidates filed for the office of city council, and we have two openings. So we don't need to have an election, this ordinance will cancel the election. So would somebody like to make the motion?
I move to approve Ordinance 2025-28 as presented by staff.
I have a motion from Councilmember Morgan, second.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Weatherby. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so that gets us to the consent agenda. Counsel, is there anything on the consent agenda you would like to have removed to discuss? Big, long a consent agenda. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we accept consent agenda as written.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hosea. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Morgan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, let's go to monthly reports. Councilmembers, do you have anything to report from your liaison committee activities? Nope. Okay, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am. Just I'd like to have Tim come up here in a minute and give us a kind of a status of the street projects, but also kind of report that we continue to move forwards with the city center. It's about almost 80% complete now. They have some of the walls painted, it's really starting to come together. There have been a couple expenses that we had to kind of deal with, but I still think we're going to be right at budget, maybe a little bit over, but it just depends on how things go between now and the end of the year. So, with that, I would say that I've noticed that the park work on the trails that we've done since the last council meeting, Tim has been involved in that. You want to give a report on that as well?
Yeah, so trails are coming along very nicely. We're to the stage now where matting and putting the granite gravel on the trails, that work continued today. It's going to take us a little while longer. Jeff and I had met with some folks about contributing in on a rainbow bridge or a boardwalk, which we kind of got a good location. We're not finalized on that. I'm going to meet with a contractor, try to get a cost estimate for them. But park's coming along very nicely. Excuse me. Seal coating is going real well. We are one day behind schedule. One day last week, we had a high potential for rain, the humidity was really high. We just weren't willing to take the chance of seal coating and having it end up in everybody's driveway and yards. So we're one day behind. We have a couple sections left to go, and we'll make that up probably around September 11. We'll hit that last, we did the first day on the second day. So we'll go back after we're done with the project and do the second day at that time. As far as the road reconstruction errands back, they had left, you know, with the flooding, and they had some emergency repairs that they were called in to do. So they're back in town, they've been here about two weeks. We've got material delivered up in south, along Mountain Dew, Whitetail area. We ran into a little bit of issues with utilities being very shallow. We're kind of vetting that out right now. The engineer came out, he drew up some additional plans. We're getting a cost estimate, what it would take to move some of that, or if it would be cheaper to move the road. So we're working on that. They have since moved over to west to start on that side, on the other side of where we're seal coating, so we've got a lot of activity going around. As soon as they can get us a price on the little issue we're having up there at the Whitetail, Mountain Dew area, we'll jump back up there and continue on that. So everything's going real well in public works where...
Sounds like it could be a pretty big issue if you have to...
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Sounds like it could be a pretty big issue if you have to move utilities.
Well, the utilities up there are nine inches to the top of the pipe from the top of the ground.
Is it just, is it the water and the wastewater, or the wastewater line?
So it's the wastewater right now, but the water's going to be under the road regardless. If we move it, or if we relocate it, it won't be, so...
You know, one of the things that this area has that's going to happen is whenever Monarch Ridge builds, they're going to put bigger utilities down this line. So I'll talk to you more about that. We may try to do something temporary until such time as they come in there and put in those utilities, because then we can replace it at their cost, not our cost.
That's what I'm doing right now, Jeff, is trying to get a cost estimate of what I can ship some money around and possibly put those lines in, obviously with your approval, to get them out from under the road and moved out of our way.
Right, thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Bay West Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to close one lane all the way, and then have...
Frank, I don't have the exact answer for that right now. What I have talked to Jeff about, and I think I'm going to try to explore, is I might try to do that at night. If we closed half of that road at 6 o'clock at night, you know, by midnight, or by 9 o'clock, let's be honest, it's Horseshoe Bay midnight, not a lot of traffic out there. If I can get that down while it's still a pretty warm temperature on the asphalt itself, I think by 4 o'clock in the morning, it'll be dry. So, there's a heck of a lot of traffic out there right now, and there's, so that one's bothering me a little bit.
It's going to be a challenge.
So what we, what I might try to do is seal coat that at night.
Any more questions for Tim? Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Are there any other department reports?
Ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to point out to the council, they sent us our, the board packet. I discussed this with Jason a little bit this morning. I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at it, but the deer carcasses that we've, they picked up year-to-date, as of July, this year were 309, last year at this time, 145. So it's more than double the hits. I didn't realize it was that much. But we'll start trapping, you said in October, Jason? On October, and, you know, hopefully that'll, that'll address that problem some, and you've got...
With the additional traps?
With the additional, two more traps, two additional traps. Right. Yeah, and we haven't done our fall time deer population count, so we had a good fawn crop, I mean, that may have been part of the addition. And then the drought conditions eased up, you know, in the city, so we kept a lot of deer in the city, more so than usual during the summer. So that was, that may have contributed to some of those as well.
Did you have a question about...
When you say you'll address that problem, what is the problem? Which...
Well, the problem is that when you, when we have 309 hits, you assume that, I would assume that most of those 309...
Deer population is going up.
That they, that we've got more deer on the road, and that more people are hitting them, and that we're picking, you know, they're picking them up on the road.
These are like deer that have been hit?
Deer carcass, these are carcasses.
Carcasses that were picked up.
Well, yeah. Now, you know what, some of these are other than deer. The deer were 171 compared to 63 last year. Other carcasses, I guess that's armadillos and possums, I don't know.
Scums, raccoons.
Yeah.
Everything.
Yeah, so, anyway, you know, the deer, the deer population is up, so the trapping will address that, hopefully, so... And then the other, the other one that I, that I wanted to ask you about, Roy. Your, our favorite one, our favorite home, 1902 Bay West Boulevard. It says that it is in preparation for...
We have a contractor who is registered, I believe now, who's allegedly going to take over this project and re-permit it. Why that hasn't happened yet appears to be a byproduct of negotiations between the property owner/investor and this new contractor. Exactly where they are, we keep being told that's going to be resolved any time now, and yet another month goes by and it's not.
Well, there's some kind of a restriction in timing in terms of the letter that we've sent them. What's their deadline?
Ooh, it's coming up pretty quick. Even the extension that you gave them is in jeopardy pretty soon. We gave them a demand letter to take certain action. They took some action, but not complete action.
I think you hold their feet to the fire on that. That's been there a long time, so...
We have a young lady in Dottie's office that's ready and able to start the process.
I don't know, Counsel, how do you feel about that? Do we just keep fooling with these people?
Hold their feet to the fire.
Yeah, this permit was issued in November 2023, so, you know, they're coming up on two years, which is not, I mean, some houses take two years, but this stop work order has been there a long time. I mean, I hate to, I hate to tear the house down, but they need to, she needs to make her deal and get it sold, and let the next people come in.
It's, there's no reason why whatever resolution that they are proposing should take...
Yeah, okay. Okay, is any other, any other business, Jeff? You have another, you have something else? Then, then we are going to move into executive session at 5:08. We're moving into executive session for annual evaluation of city manager by the city council under Texas Government Code 551.074 and Cottonwood Shores Firefighting Services Agreement under 551.071, consultation with the city attorney. So at 5:08, we'll move into executive session.